Yes. Call to order, the Delaware County Commissioner meeting on Monday, August 19th, 2019 is now 9:02, please stand for the call.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, good morning. Mr. Craig Craft, would you be the honor of reading the roll call, please?
Mr. Kane.
Here.
Mr. Henry.
Here.
Ms. Reagan.
Present.
Mr. Burr.
Here.
Okay. Two more minutes.
So moved. I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes, thank you. And we have a presentation today, and I think Pam McCammon, our HR Director, wants to lead us.
Okay. Pam McCammon, Delaware County Community Resources. I want to take this time to introduce these wonderful people that are with United Way, and they're here to make a presentation. This is Liz Ledwin, Jenny Marsh, and Damon Elmore.
Elmore.
Elmore, okay. And they're just, oh, they want you on camera. And they're just going to give you a five, six, seven, 10-minute presentation. We have, Mike Jones has been good enough to spearhead this with the help of Jenny Honeycutt, and I really appreciate that because the two of them together will make this thing rock and roll. So I'm going to turn this over to them and let them tell you about it. Thank you.
I'm Liz Ledwin from Muncie Power Products. We'd like to thank you for having us today. We're proud to represent Muncie Power Products. Damon and I both work at Muncie Power on the leadership team and represent Muncie Power as co-chairs of the United Way campaign for this year. Again, many thanks for allowing us to be here, and we ask for your support for this year's campaign. We're also very privileged and humbled to be able to raise funds for those in our community that are not able to help themselves. So again, many thanks. Thank you.
I echo what Liz says. I am Damon Elmore. The other thing that's great about it for me, and I also want to thank the county employees who will also make consideration of sharing their resources, is I'm new to the community. I've been here two years now, so I don't ever want to miss an opportunity to thank you all for welcoming me into the community. I'm enjoying it quite a bit. I am appreciative of allowing me to do things like this. It's a big deal, and it's not lost on me, the impact that it has and how it helps us all make the place better. As good as it is, it helps to make it better, so I wanted to just also say thank you for that. Jenny might have a couple more minutes to really talk about the direct impact about the United Way, things that we have learned over these last few months that have made it easy for us to go out and sing the praises and cheer for the United Way.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for giving us time today. Unlike Damon, I'm as local as you get. My maiden name is McGalyard, born and raised here. My heart is all about Delaware County. This is my hometown, and the community we have today is very different than it was when I was born here. Nearly half of all Delaware County households cannot make ends meet. Twenty-one percent of Delaware County households live in poverty and qualify for public assistance, but in addition to that, 27% of households are struggling. These families are working, working really hard, sometimes two and three jobs, but not able to fully meet their basic budget, let alone save anything for a safety net in case the transmission goes out in the car or in the heater breaks at home, or whatever the case may be. So they live one crisis away from sliding into poverty, and those are the households that United Way is really laser-focused on helping right now to meet the most basic crisis needs they face right now because they don't qualify for public assistance, but also to help put families on a pathway out of poverty, on a pathway towards sustainability, and on a pathway that will ultimately help them thrive. I've prepared some folders for the commissioners. One includes the Allen's Report, which is about those struggling, working families, they're asset limited, income constrained, and employed, and it talks all about Delaware County and the state of our households. But the other sheet that's in this form, or in this folder that I think is really helpful is about our bold goal, and it's about our vision to put people on a pathway out of poverty towards sustainability and to a point where they're thriving. And one thing that we know is we turn outward, we listen to and learn from those struggling, working families from agencies we fund and agencies we don't fund. We talked to CEOs of major corporations, we did man-on-the-street interviews. Across this community of ours, we heard that education is what our citizens value the most. Many lamented not taking better advantage of their own education, they worried about the education of their children and their grandchildren, and they wanted to make life better for those coming before them, right? So we took that information back and we said, what expert data, research, knowledge, information can help us figure out what in education is the linchpin? And what we learned is third grade reading is the single greatest predictor of a child's success in school and life, so much so that some state penitentiaries base their prison capacity on third grade reading scores. Why is that? Well, that's the year where students transition from learning how to read into being students who read to learn, and failure to make that transition puts them in jeopardy, jeopardy of graduating from high school. Kiddos not reading at grade level by the end of their third grade year are four times more likely to drop out of high school, 13 times more likely to drop out if they live in low-income households. Well, if nearly half of all Delaware County households are struggling to make ends meet, and those kiddos are 13 times more likely to drop out of high school, this could be the game changer for our community. In fact, we know statistically nationally, 80% of kids living in low-income households are not reading at grade level. So how are we doing in Delaware County? Well, I'm pleased to tell you that based on iRead pass rates, it looks like 90% of our kiddos are passing iRead, which was our state's reading proficiency theme, that the real reality is in some of our most poorest schools, just over 50% of the kids are passing. So those kiddos are in jeopardy, those kiddos are at risk, and that's where we're putting a lot of resources to put them on a pathway out of poverty. But in the meantime, we know if we put all kinds of resources and busting through barriers and making sure kids are reading at grade level, but they go home to dysfunction or there's struggles and strikes with their families, we're not going to be successful. So we're investing in programs that provide wraparound services for the whole family and help get them there. One thing we heard when we listened to families was that they're taking care of their grandchildren, but also having to take care of their parents. So we have some senior care programs that are helping to make sure that we can help with that, that challenge, so they can focus on making sure their kiddo is reading at grade level and on the pathway to success. So this form tells you about our bold goal for grade-level reading, it talks about the things that are being invested in. $800,000 are going to 28 programs, super exciting. But in addition to that, we're putting another $400,000 to $500,000 into direct service programs that are all about grade-level reading, making sure kiddos have access to books and words in the home, and that those barriers are being busted through when there isn't already a program in place to do it. And I want to tell you that we work with great authenticity and accountability. Our whole investment strategy is informed by the community, but we have to be accountable to the people whose will is driving our work. And so we hold the line on overhead. And according to our most recent 990, 17.7% of our budget is overhead, which is well within the Better Business Bureau's threshold of what a not-for-profits overhead should be. But I'm super pleased to tell you that because of George and Francis Ball Foundation, Ball Brothers Foundation, and Indiana United Ways Grants, our overhead is completely covered so that 100% of dollars go to the impact strategies, the work, and the grade-level reading focus that we have as well. There's also an info sheet in your folders that talks about that and how we work to be very transparent and open with the community. Do you have any questions for me?
Well, I'd like to thank all three of you for being here, and I really want to give a shout-out to Muncie Powers, who are letting two of their staff. Usually it's just one per company, but this is just amazing, and we know that they're very supportive.
Thanks for that, Commissioner. Again, if I could also add, our director of our Technology Solution Group, Kevin Whaler, is chair of the board for the United Way of Delaware County.
Wow.
So it raises allowed three people out of the office to do some things.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you guys.
Thank you for running the United Way campaign.
Do we have a kickoff date for the big United Way push?
Oh, the big United Way push, we have a concert on Walnut Street on September 5th. Music starts at 7 o'clock. It's going to be lots of fun with Cook 'n' Bell, there'll be food, lots of fun for the whole family. Charlie Cardinal will be down there. If you haven't gotten your picture taken with Charlie, it's a great opportunity. And then on September 6th, which is Friday, Day of Action takes place. Last year, we had about 900 volunteers serving throughout the county. We hope to top that number this year, so we'll be sure to report back to you and let you know, but there'll be volunteer projects all over our great community.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Pam, and we appreciate Mike stepping forward, too. Thank you. Okay, now we have AR Engineering.
Hello. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Mara Hoff. I'm an attorney with DeFer Varan at 400 South Walnut Street here in Muncie. I now represent AR Engineering. So I realize you haven't seen me before, I'm coming a little late to the game, but I appreciate you taking the time to hear our presentation this morning. When I watched the two meetings where the plat was considered, I noticed that the only real objections to the plat were the identity of the tenant going in there and a comment made about lot size. So I thought I would address those substantively as well as we can. The first being that the lot size meets all of the standards set out in code. That was fully flushed out by the plat committee. We have 12 pages of development standards to meet and working directly with the plat committee, all of those were met, and we did receive unanimous approval. So we're in a rather unique situation here where the right-of-way is the only thing that was not accepted as part of the plat. In researching Indiana law, it's very clear to me that the time for discretion in those standards is when we actually develop them and pass them as an ordinance. In their application, it's merely a ministerial act. So the only action that actually came before this board was to accept an additional 17 feet of right-of-way. To deny that acceptance of right-of-way based upon who the tenant will be is contrary to Indiana law and your own statutes. So we respectfully are asking this morning that you reconsider that motion to deny and accept the additional right-of-way as a ministerial act required of the commissioners. And I'm happy to answer any questions. We have the engineers here and the developer if you have additional questions about the project. I know corporate may have reached out to you to discuss their plans, what they expect of their tenants. We know that this developer is not the same developer as the facility in Albany, so you could expect a different standard from the ones who are local here, as well as your general...
They're all Dollar General stores, it doesn't matter who the developer is. At the end of the day, you still get the same result.
I respect your opinions, sir.
Thank you.
Understood.
Is there, I know we're not having a public hearing here, but is there some of the neighbors here in the audience, is there any neighbors here in the audience? Would anyone like to speak? Like I said, we don't want to get into big public hearing, but would anyone like to speak about the Dollar General going neighborhood? Because I know there was planning on putting it across the street, and there was a huge opposition to that as well. Mike, could please?
Absolutely.
Commissioners, my name is John. I live across the street from the proposed Dollar General. I'm going to speak on behalf of our neighbors, and I understand that we're here on a fairly small issue, which is the right-of-way, so I will restrict my comments to that issue. And I want to talk about traffic in the road. 300, where we live, is a fairly narrow road. I think it's barely 20 feet paved across. It has no shoulders to speak of, and it has drop-off ditches. But it's fairly likely to be traveled and is not in the greatest condition. So we have concerns about this right-of-way in the Dollar General with the bus stop that's there, the bridge that's there, the road that is already in poor enough condition that I don't think anyone's complained to you, but if we start seeing daily semi-traffic and all that additional traffic, it's certainly going to hurt the road. There's concerns on 67 with traffic turning in and out, the way people drive through the area already. We already see accidents at our intersection with this Dollar General squeezed into there that will only give additional concerns. There are no turn lanes on either road, no way to get in, like I said, no shoulder, no place for the buses to stop. But all in all, I think that granting this right-of-way and allowing Dollar General to add this additional entrance on 300 would have a substantial impact on not only our little community, but on the obligations that US County have to maintain that road, that bridge, and to deal with those traffic concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, if I may address that directly, the developer is willing to remove any ingress or egress on County Road 300. They already have their end-up permits for 67, so traffic could easily access the facility off of the main road, if that is a concern, if that is the deal killer. We would still offer the 50 feet of right-of-way if you needed to maintain any infrastructure along there, but we would remove any ingress or egress if we so decide.
I'm still not convinced, Mrs. I'd like to get some right place for this.
I need everyone, when they speak, I need them to sign their first name and their last name.
My name is Don Hanson, and I live adjacent to the property. No question. I've seen the stakes out there, I have lots of air kit and used their dimensions to lay it out. I put stakes out and put yellow tape up to see exactly where this is going. They may say it hits all the criteria, but they're also asking for a 15-foot easement to build closer to my house. They want to put it 35 feet from my property line, which puts it, basically, I'm in their shadow. I've been around to the other buildings, all their air conditioning units are on the backside of the building, which would be right beside my house, around 24 hours a day, air conditioning, heating. The basin, which I believe they call the drainage basin, which I went around, looked at a lot of drainage basins, which will be right beside my front yard, is, a lot of them are just grown up in weeds, they don't even mow them anymore. It won't be standing water, but it's just going to be probably wheat-infested because it's just hard to mow it after it gets wet and all the stuff starts growing up in there. I have a petition here that I didn't get around to putting with the, on the record, but I've got over 30 immediate landowners from that, right around my property, that are all immediate neighbors, and none of them, every one of them is against. So I'd like to enter that in, just if it's all possible, enter that in. But they're shoehorning this thing, and they're turning it sideways, they can't even face the road. They're turning it sideways and shoving up against my house, where there's thousands of acres available between Daleville and Muncie to put this in. They can't even fit it properly like a normal store would be. They're turning it sideways, and they're putting it right against my house, and my neighbor's house, the parking lot, will basically butt up right next to her yard. So yeah, I don't think the argument that it's, it's a good bit, it's long and narrow, and it won't fit right, and they're trying to argue the point by infringing upon my privacy and my neighbor's privacy, and asking for the county to change their rules for how far you go. You're supposed to put it just a bit away from our property line. They're asking for only 35 feet. So their argument that it just fits fine is, I think, is absolutely wrong. I guess that's all I got to say right now.
I believe he may have had the original plat and not the updated one, so Andrew Rosell, our engineer, is here to address specifically that question.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Andrew Rosell with AR Engineering, 4664 Campus Drive, Kama Zou, Michigan. We appreciate you rehearing this and bringing to light some more facts about the development. As this gentleman said, we had originally saw a variance for a 15-foot side setback for, there's a gas easement that runs through the property. And so in order to meet that easement requirement, we had proposed to situate the building 35 feet from the, from the side setback. Originally, we had been told that the 50 feet was from residential use in that structure. However, later in the development process, we were informed that the 50 feet was to the property line. So in our revised plan, we have shifted that, no variance will be sought, we meet all the zoning aspects of the project per ordinance, and I would like to reiterate that what we're here today is to discuss the right-of-way, the acceptance of the right-of-way. As far as the opinions of the gentleman in reference to the development, oftentimes we are situated on one acre. The other stores in Yorktown and Muncie Wheeling are both on roughly an acre and a half. So a matter of opinion is based on the size of this lot. We're well over two acres, and this is a traditional layout that we see. It's facing the road. We were providing access on both roads for convenience to alleviate any traffic problems for customers wanting to, wanting to exit or enter from 300 to avoid having to go out on the highway. If that's a problem, we'd be happy to remove that drive on 300. Thank you.
Thank you. So, it's a pleasure.
If I could ask some questions of Marta, please? I'm going to put you on the spot, Marta.
Okay.
The official action of the commissioners here is to accept a right-of-way grant, correct?
Correct.
The plat has already gone through the plat committee, and the plat committee has set forth the specific criteria as to what needs to be done to have the plat approved.
Correct.
One of those things that has to be approved is that the commissioners have to accept this, in essence, gift of a right-of-way for the plat to be approved.
Yes.
To the best of my knowledge, and I couldn't find anything, and are you familiar with any standards that say that commissioners have to accept all gifts?
No. I'm not aware of any.
If the commissioners accept it, then this plat is approved and they can start construction, correct? They don't need any variances, from what the engineer just said.
From what was stated, it sounds as if they would not need variances. If the plat is approved, the process that's set out in the Delaware County subdivision ordinance is that the adjoining property owners would be notified of the approval, and they have the option of appealing the approval to the plan commission. And then the plan commission would basically rehear the plat and make their decision, and I can say that the approval of a plat with a requirement for dedication of right-of-way is absolutely the norm. And so the plan commission's action could place us back in a similar situation.
Okay. And if the commissioners would not accept the right-of-way, then that would be disapproval of the plat, correct?
Correct.
And then the process would be that the applicant would then appeal to the plan commission, correct? Is that how that works? If the applicant that...
Yes, yes.
...up the plat.
Right. If the action today is denial of the acceptance of the right-of-way, then that would be considered denial of the plat in accordance with the action of the plat committee, and then the applicant can appeal to the plan commission.
All right. That's why I just wanted to clarify the process. So the thing that the commissioners are voting on today is not the plat itself, but you're voting on the acceptance of the right-of-way, which in essence, a right-of-way grant to the county of land.
I make a motion, I refuse to accept the dedication of the land of the right-of-way.
Check. Roll call.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you.
Just as a follow-up, I will be preparing findings regarding the plat, and I will forward a copy to Ms. Tom and Mr. Rosell, and...
And me, too, if you would, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
And we'll go from next.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, contracts and agreements, Mrs. Muncie.
Good morning, Commissioners. The contract in front of you is with GAI. This is for inspection services for the replacement of Ridge 127 located on 600 West at York City Creek. The not-to-exceed amount is 165,200, which will receive 80% reimbursement.
And that's to start next year.
Yeah. The lighting is February of 2020.
Thank you.
I make a motion, we approve the LPA consult contract.
Check. Roll call, please.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Ordinance for second reading, ordinance number 2019-014.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Thank you. And ordinance for first reading, ordinance 2019-016.
Make a motion to...
Introduce. I'll second the introduction.
Roll call.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
I make a motion, we suspend the rules on ordinance number 2019-016, ordinance amending section 174 of the Delaware County Code of Ordinance Regarding the Delaware County Tax Act Fund.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
I make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2019-016.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Okay. Department heads, like the officials.
I sent to all of the commissioners the first amended edit plan for 2019 to 2022. This is to change Project 14, I think it is, which is the Tiger Drive Bridge because of some bills that are due in 2019 as opposed to 2020. I think I got the amounts right, didn't I, Andy?
Forty thousand for 19.
Yep. And so we would need to do that so we could pay those bills in 2019.
I'll make a motion to amend the edit plan, the 2019 edit plan.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
We did, Jason, John, Mike, I did meet with the Muncie EMS chief, the new chief. So we did get some questions answered. They have some work to do to get some agreements put together for us. So it was a pretty good meeting, lasted about three hours. So it was a good meeting, and we hope... Have you heard anything else since?
Good morning, Commissioners. Jason Rogers, Director of Urban Management. No, not anything. We sent them back with some questions, and they are going to make the proposal for interlocal agreement. I think the request for our assistance, from what I took from that meeting from Battalion Chief Rachel Clark, was that they were getting their plans and information together, that they would make a request of us in the form of an interlocal agreement. So Battalion Chief Clark provided all the information that she could, which is a great deal of information that we have yet to process, and we asked some questions, and she's going to get back with us on that. But I think it's a first step in at least understanding what they're trying to do and give us the ability to react to whatever changes are in the industry.
It was a good meeting. Thanks.
Appreciate getting them together. Anybody else?
Paul Singleton, Director of 911. We will start the change in the lift assist this morning. I had to put that off until I got some letters signed in my medical director agreement, so as of today, Muncie Fire will be doing the non-medical lift assist within the city.
Good.
So I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bookout, can you stand up there for a minute?
Commissioners, good morning. Brad Bookout.
Brad Bookout.
Good morning. Brad, and I've discussed this, and I've had several phone calls about the WSP facility at Fort Warner and Heritage Environmental. When we sat down, we only had one meeting with Heritage concerning this plant, correct?
That is correct.
And after that meeting, they decided to go to the city of Muncie, correct?
That is correct. They looked at a site in Delaware County, and then ultimately looked at the Fort Warner site, at which time we provided the city of Muncie's contact information.
Right. And once it went to the city of Muncie, the county officials, we were more or less out.
That is correct.
Correct?
Yes.
Because we couldn't offer incentives, we couldn't offer anything to the company, so they went and worked directly with-
Once we turned it over, we had no more communication at that point.
Right. And after we did have that meeting with them for the first time, we did ask to go visit their facility in Alabama, and we wanted to have a discussion with some of the local officials there. But once they decided to go within the city of Muncie, that's where we ended our discussion.
That is absolutely correct.
This is what I would like to do, if we can, John. I would like for the Commissioners to be able to set up a meeting with WSP and Heritage Environmental, so the Commissioners can learn more about the emissions and everything else from this company. Brad, I would also like to set something up to where the Commissioners and any county official can go down and take a tour of their facility in Alabama, and also, if possible, maybe another facility that they have. We would also like to have a meeting with some of their local officials, even if they have leaders in that area, pastors, anyone else that would want to be involved. We will do, the Commissioners will do our due diligence. We will go and look. Muncie does sit in our county, so I think we should follow through. If the city didn't, we will. And we'll figure out which way we need to go with this. I would also like to invite Jamie Bane from the Health Department to sit with us. Once this went to the city, we figured that they would do their due diligence in this. And one other thing, Brad, when we get a company that comes in that selects going into the county, the Commissioners, we do visit these facilities. We do look at these businesses that come in because we want to make sure that they are the right fit for our county. So with that being said, I would like to have the meeting set up. I'd also like to have it set to where we can go down and we can visit the facility, and we can also sit down with government officials, and where we can ask questions about the facility in Alabama.
In that meeting, I would like, John, can that be an executive session?
I'd have to look at that.
I want-
Since it's not an economic development for the county, really.
Right.
That may be difficult.
I just would like to have more information from, like, you know, once they decided with the city, the city took this over, we sort of stopped at that point.
From what I'm learning from the city officials, they, no one knows a whole lot about the company or the plant production.
Right.
And I think that's where, like you said, when we travel around looking at these companies, that's what we do that for, is to make sure we're bringing companies into the county that are good companies. So if we can have, I don't want, there is a public forum tomorrow night. I don't want a public forum, I want a venue that we can sit and ask questions in.
Okay. Let me see what I can do and get some information. I know that they probably have an application at IDAM, so it probably wouldn't hurt to get a copy of that to see exactly what their proposal with IDAM.
Absolutely. Any information we can get, John, we would appreciate it. That way we can look a little bit farther. But I would like to be able to tour the facility and reach out to local officials in Alabama to discuss with them about the facility, what kind of emissions are coming out of that facility, and what sort of rate, if you can do that.
I'll work with Brad. We can, we'll see if we can get that set up, okay?
Yep. Appreciate it. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
That's all I got.
Well, I'd like to sit this, my vision of this. We did take a tour of the Heritage Group that has joined the WSP. So I don't think this WSP down in Alabama is the same company.
I don't disagree with you.
And so I don't think there's a need to go down to Alabama.
Yeah, but the WSP is going to be the group that is coming here.
But it's a city issue.
Right. But people also look to us, and the city does sit within our county.
Well, I agree, but-
And I understand what you're saying, but-
I'm kind of speechless for a change, but you can allow-
But at some point, I mean, you look at, and I agree with James, we need Jamie Bane with the Health Department to be involved in this, because, you know, there may be some ordinances that we need to take a look at as far as emissions go and the Health Department goes.
Right.
There is some, I have spoke with Jamie, and he's looking at some state statutes. There may be some ordinances that can help protect the well-being and the citizens of Delaware County, so we need to take a look at that.
Thank you. Commissioners, Brad Bookout, Delaware County Economic Development again. I do think you're going in the right direction. As you know, the public has shown significant interest in this project, and as economic development relates to all projects in the county involving the work that I do overseen by you and the Delaware County Council, we need to be responsive to those concerns and needs, and this is an opportunity for you and myself to see what is taking place at other facilities, and in the future, be very responsive to those needs, and to find out what companies bring, or hazards, or threats that they propose to our community and health and well-being of our citizens. So in that vein, I think it's a good idea to see this facility. We don't know if it's going to proceed or not at that location, but nonetheless, this is an exercise for the county to take a leading role and to be active in that direction of that, so.
And this will show us, too, if there are future companies like this that want to come, you know, we'll be a little bit more knowledgeable of these companies.
Absolutely, absolutely. I have taken initiative to craft an environmental questionnaire that from this point forward, all companies who have interest in Delaware County, if they contact my office or my services or on behalf of the Commissioners' office, I will ask them to fill out an environmental questionnaire so that we know from the get-go what type of contaminants or pollutants that the company would plan or would have intentions of emitting into the atmosphere. Also, we have a lot of brownfield sites in this community, and the questionnaire also asks what steps would they take to help clean up those brownfield sites? Is that something that we're inherently interested in, this community is not only seeing economic development, but what can companies do to clean up some of our existing contamination and be in danger?
And I also welcome, if one of the city officials would like to go, I would welcome him to go also. I just think this is-
They should have already been there.
But I think this is a big issue that, you know, it needs to be-
I agree, they should have already done their homework, so.
I think it's important to note, too, that the county was originally contacted by the company. The company came, looked at a site. We were under an NDA, a nondisclosure. We did not know the full extent of the company, we just knew the parameters of the investment and job creation. We showed them one site in the county. They subsequently said that they liked the Fort Warner site through conversations. At that point, I provided them contact information with economic development officials in the city of Muncie, and at that point, we were hands-off. It exited our jurisdiction as far as approvals, and have not had contact directly with the company since that time. Since that contact was given, it's been many months ago, so.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you. We can work with John and get that stuff set up, we'd appreciate it.
Get it done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Jesse's back there, I'd like for him to come forward and give us an update on all the wonderful work that's happening out in the county. Heard some news today, we always like to hear good news. Look at him smiling, all good news.
Bob Jesse, Delaware County Highway Department. As you know, you know, we had a bad start because of all the rain. We have just started paving. We've probably done maybe 10 lane miles. We're doing a lot of maintenance, chip and seal, and we're probably 40, 45 lane miles or miles on that, outside of spending a lot of money for culverts and so forth. It's just been, it's been a tough year of cold winter weather.
Bob, do you have any recommendations, what we can do out in the county when we have the hired hands helping farmers cut corners and they break off the ends of those culverts? We just are just inundated with-
You mean as far as we need to eliminate that?
Well, can we put any kind of post up? I mean, this-
They're gonna, they're gonna, I mean, John, you can-
You know, if they're running over the pipe now, they're just gonna take your hose down, too.
The wider the pipe is, the smaller-
Stop them.
It's just heartening, because the miserable culvert has to go out and replace them and can't keep the head up yet.
And you know, our biggest problem, our biggest problem is corn stalls, beans stubble.
Yeah.
When we get them kind of rains, it just floods them up. You can't clean them, you have to pretty much take them out and put new ones in. You know, to me, I think there should be a ordinance where the farmers should have to put some type of barricade around those pipes to keep that problem from happening. Now, where we have to go to come up with that ordinance? I don't know, but I'd be willing to find a solution.
In this dry weather, they're allowed to burn them, you know, when the wind's going back towards the field, not across the road, but there is a problem out there with this corn. But we are glad to hear the good news about the chip and seal and new paving machines working well. Appreciate all your good help. You know, thanks so much, Robert, appreciate it.
They did a real nice job at 400 East, out by my house. Rolled it, and it looks real good.
We're hearing all kinds of nice compliments from the crew we have out there working on. Okay, the monthly waste major, he's always bringing his report in, the payments at Plating of $2,239,614.07.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Any questions from the public, comments?
Make a motion, recess.
Motion, recess.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Thank you.